Let's go, here we go.
Yeah, so she said.
Okay, roll call Jake.
Kramer?
Eric.
Ridley?
Here.
Uh, Blas? Bobby.
Blasman.
Hi, it's early in the morning. My bad. And Vance?
Here.
And Reed's not here. All present.
Okay. Thank you Jake. Hope to comment on agenda items?
Before we start that. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to move that we amend the agenda. Eliminate items five through nine.
Is there an additional amendment?
Yes, please.
Jay and I found out yesterday, we need to do a different motion for Awaken Federal Credit Union, so I'd like to add signature cards for Awaken.
Number five?
That can be done.
Okay, is your motion, is there support? Oh wait a minute, let's, any more additions to the agenda? Can we move to a motion to?
I second your motion.
Well, it's a motion to amend the agenda. As written.
I second your motion.
All in favor?
To do it to an agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
So the agenda is township effects policies and, and.
For those police interrogations.
Some fell down the stairs. Some was falling down the stairs.
Yeah, wonder.
Wow.
Some just like.
That place is watered, Dad, new librarian.
Yeah, same, there was a librarian.
So.
I'm sorry Bob.
I know this is unusual, but if it's alright with you, I just would ask if you just like have a little moment of silence and you can have your own little prayer for the Lang family and the employees and our fired employers.
Yeah. Just have a moment of silence, good idea.
Thank you. Just glad nobody was hurt.
Okay, chapter four, financial administration.
Before we get started, I'd just like to ask, I'll make a motion if necessary. Before we go through this. Jan Delahaw is a financial subject matter expert and I'd like to ask, since this is a workshop, if you could ask her to help us or ask her to help me with this. Jay, if this is okay.
I don't have a problem with it.
Well, may I speak?
Sure.
Um, I would ask that we table this because there are so, this is such a sensitive matter. The financial administration is near the heart of everything. And there were things in here that I didn't have time between when we got this, 51 pages, to look up everything and double check it for my own self, to even be able to ask legitimate and, you know, questions that are relevant. So I would ask that we table this and we can together pick a date if it's the regular meeting or if it's a future workshop, but I was unable to get through this all and I don't even feel comfortable with being able to ask the right questions at this point. I'm very uncomfortable with discussing it intelligently at this point.
I'd like to go through it.
Is that your motion?
Yes. It's just, I mean Bob had a, asked if I were just kinda discussing, I don't think Bob made a motion or nor did I.
I'd just like to go through it. We don't have to pass it if you want.
Well, I, again, going through it, I can't ask the appropriate questions.
Well, I have questions, I have questions, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay.
I have questions as well.
Right.
And I think they could be clarified.
That's the purpose of a workshop.
But I'd like to go through it and then itemize the areas where we do have questions and obviously come back at another time and address those questions.
I haven't, I haven't made a motion to pass it.
Okay. And I guess I just don't feel comfortable that there won't be a motion to pass it at some point if it's.
I haven't made a motion to pass it.
But if it's on the agenda, you can. So that's why I would feel more comfortable.
So can we start?
Well, I'm gonna, I guess I will make a motion to postpone this matter until the regular December meeting.
Second that? Roll call, please.
Kramer?
No.
Ridley?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
I'm sorry, Blas is a yes. Vance is a no, Reed's a no.
Okay.
May I make a motion then that we do not fully read 51 pages to our audience on a Saturday morning with a storm coming? Can we just talk 4.1, is there any questions? 4.2, I don't think, and especially with Janet in a mask.
I don't think we were gonna read it.
Well, I'm in a mask because there's a little bug going around my house, so I'm just trying to be respectful to everybody else. I'm not sick or anything, but I just wanna make sure I'm respectful.
I did intend to read it.
Okay, I know Janet did last time, so I just wanna make sure.
I did intend to.
Okay, perfect.
I may wanna read parts of five. So, um, if it's okay, I'd just like Jay and Jan to take it from here.
I think we should make the, we should make the first one, but Jan missed part of that.
Oh yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that we include Jan Delahaw as a subject matter expert to help us with only chapter four in this workshop.
Is there support? I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yo.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was the, was it all in favor or was it?
No, I said no.
No.
I said aye.
So 4.1, Bobby's in.
Go ahead.
So I will begin by reading what the purpose of the finance package is here. So it's financial administration, section four of what would be in a handbook for completing all the other sections. Section 4.1, financial administration. Township adopts Michigan Department of Treasury's accounting procedures manual and shall comply to the extent possible with both the required policies and the best practices identified in this manual. Following policies are intended to represent compliance with the accounting procedures manual and Tusk River Township's administrative structure and procedures. The policy manual can anticipate all possibilities that may be encountered when administering the township or the finances of the township. The following policies establish a framework for adequate controls over the financial administration processes. When questions arise, the township board must refer to this manual and agree to a solution to that question and add, delete, or amend this manual. Any questions?
So, because of the next important two, that just talks about the strategic plan.
I can summarize the key points of this.
Yeah, yeah, please.
If that's acceptable to everybody.
Yeah, don't read it.
There will be a couple sentences I read, but in general, I try to keep it concise. The, section 4.2 is development and it talks about budget. And it talks about approaches to developing a budget as recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. Budget shall be based on expected revenues. And it goes into explaining what those are. Results or outcomes that matter most to citizens, those of the township strategic plan will be identified and based on that, the board will determine what programs are most important to the constituents. The budget allocations shall be made in a fair and objective manner and the board shall budget available dollars to the most significant programs and activities that maximize the benefit to the avail, of the available resources to obviously the community. So there's a timetable here. I am just gonna summarize this. April 1st would be department heads get together with the supervisor to propose expenditure plans. April 15th supervisor meets with department heads. May board meeting supervisor presents proposed budget to township board. June board meeting, budget would have a public hearing held by the township board. And then the last Tuesday in June, the General Appropriations Act adopted and posts final budget on the township webpage. And if necessary, the supervisor may call a special meeting, budget workshop to discuss any elements of the budget.
I have two questions, if I may.
Sure.
Um, the results or outcomes that matter most to citizens? Will we have a survey? How will we determine that?
Should be in the strategic plan.
Okay, so it'll come from a planning manual, not directly from citizens each year?
Part of the strategic plan process that the county uses includes input from citizens, boards, commissions, and we're gonna need help with that.
Okay.
A lot of help with that. I mean, it took the county really long.
Okay. So how will we do it to begin with until we develop that strategy?
We're gonna have to develop a strategic plan at some point.
Okay. And then the next one, in the May board meeting, you say supervisor presents proposed budget to township board, board adopts and posts. We're not really adopting.
Okay, yeah, that should be changed. What do you think it ought to be changed to?
Just posts, get rid of adopts.
Okay, board posts?
Yes.
Board, yeah, posts, I'm sorry.
That's all.
Good catch. Alright. That was page one. Now we're into 4.4, methods. That's just, that has to be in there as a, as a matter of fact. Format, the proposed, I'm sorry.
I, currently the board uses a department approach? Why are we changing to line item in this?
Well, it's a line items within departments, is that correct?
It's different. Line item means each line, so I as the treasurer cannot move within departments is the way I understand it. Again, I didn't have time to.
That's a good question.
Total research. Line item means that, that it totally changes what we do.
I have a question for you, will we? Yeah, go ahead.
This is in creating budget, this is not administering budget. So the supervisor can't come in and say, I want $120,000 in my department. They have to give you a line item in line. Okay. Not the same as appropriating budget. Okay, clear, clear. I just wanna make sure. Okay, so it's in developing. So we're gonna develop it by line, just like we.
Well, it does say that, but I skipped that.
Okay, no, that's okay, I just.
No, no, that's a good.
Well, there's different words than what I'm used to.
That's a good question.
That's a good point. That's not clear enough, but township boards should use a line item approach.
I mean, there's probably a name for that type of budget.
When developing a code, that's exactly what we're doing already.
In developing.
In developing.
Okay. But thank you for asking the question, I wanna make sure that.
I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna underline that for myself.
If there's a different wording.
Yep.
Name, name it, okay. Thank you.
So, you, you, don't need to be sorry. Uh, the fund balance is, I believe this was in act.
Where are we?
I'm sorry, we're on, we're not, we're not pages here, so it's.
4.5.
4.1.
4.5.
4.5, okay. Eric, thank you.
Format.
Yeah, got it. Okay, 4.5 is format. The proposed and adopted budgets shall provide financial data on revenues and we get into, you know, again, additional, explain what that is for at least a three-year period, including prior year actual current year budget or estimated current year actual and proposed budget. The budget will not be artificially inflated, which means it becomes a zero-based budget. The proposed adopted budget shall include a narrative that summarizes the major changes to priorities or service levels from the current year and the factors leading to those changes. Identify priorities and key issues for the new budget period. Identifies and summarizes major financial factors and trends affecting budgets such as economic factors, long-range outlooks, significant changes in revenue, collection, tax collections, tax rates or other changes, current and future debt obligations and significant use of or increase in fund balance for retained revenues.
Can I comment on that? See what you think, Bobby. What concerns me and the reason I kinda like this is, I know the, let's use Parks. Parks has a five-year plan, but when they present a budget, I'd really like to know, hey, what are your top three? So if there was enough money there, and we kinda tried to do that last time and that's how we gave them $45,000 for the tennis and pickleball courts. So if, if they said, look, this is our budget, but we'd really like to have, you know, priority one, two, and three from our five-year plan, or if you have extra money, you know, we would like to have this, this, and this. The police department does it already, correct? To some extent?
I don't believe so.
When he puts his cars, he, when he does his vehicles, he kind of.
He explains as he.
He prioritizes. His prioritizes. So especially with Parks, I'd like a lot more feedback from them at these things.
So this is gonna be department heads who are responsible for.
Yes, ma'am.
Identifying that.
So, but I'm asking you all, by sticking with the Parks example, would we have the chairperson do that or would Doug be doing that? Or does it not matter?
I met with Doug last year.
Yeah, but when they come to us to talk to us.
I don't mean that, I mean, that's up to them, that's there.
Okay, okay, great, alright. I'm new.
Alright, moving on. Budget adoption, section 4.6. Prior to the beginning of each fiscal year, the township board shall annually adopt the budget using a departmental method of adoption. There you go.
Yeah, there it is.
There it is.
There's your cost center, yep.
And unless otherwise directed in the General Appropriations Act, i.e. our cost center. Board shall monitor and amend the budget as needed to approve and control all expenditures. And that, we get into more of what that is in the rest of this, this package.
4.7.
4.7, designation of budget officer supervisor shall be the township budget officer and shall be responsible for the development and administration of township budget. Transfer authority within the budget cost center. The department shall have the authority to make transfers within a cost center without prior board approval, which is what we're doing today, excluding personnel costs and capital expenditures. The board shall notify as next meaning any such transfers made, deserves the right to modify that and notify any of such transfers. Under no circumstances may the total general fund budget be changed without prior board approval.
Alright.
One last sentence, all budget adjustments will be recorded in the budget system slash record by the. You're gonna say something?
You don't have to rehearse.
Alright.
Well, so I wanna ask.
Whenever I skip, I wish I had heard.
I know, how do you feel?
I wanna ask, is sentence two overly restrictive? In 4.8, Bobby.
Of course, the board shall notify as next meaning.
Is that overly restrictive?
Well, my concern would be if, when I bought my computer.
Uh huh.
I already purchased my computer.
Okay, so should we scratch that whole line?
So I don't know how you would have nullified it. So I mean, and I'm sure there's many more examples like that.
So should we scratch that line?
I would say yes.
Cause I had a note to ask that question. Okay.
That was a better line, the whole sentence, correct?
Right.
Uh, budget monitoring.
That's pretty simple.
Yeah, well, I'll just give you the headline here. Budget shall use the following approaches to monitor the budget as recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. They'll establish measures of annual progress. They'll use periodic financial reporting with performance measures to compare actual versus budgeted. Board will communicate performance results so that township personnel and public will be informed in an understandable form. So that talks about monitoring, that's them. Section 410 is about fund balance.
And there's been no changes that I can see.
So the parentheses, I, you know, basically represent agreements or resolutions enacted in previous boards or previous years. So this was enacted in 10-3-2017. And essentially, it's been a copy, is that correct Bobby? It's been copied from those resolutions.
I have questions about this.
Okay, well, let's, let's talk about it then. 410, fund balance, township board believes that sound financial.
The table is what I have.
Okay. Sound financial management principles require sufficient funds to be retained by the township to provide a stable financial base at all times. Obviously, that would be a savings account. Order to do so, the township needs to maintain fund balance sufficient to fund all cash flows with the township to provide for financial reserves, for unanticipated one-time expenditures and emergency needs. The purpose of this policy is to identify the size and composition of the township's fund balance, i.e. its savings account. To identify certain requirements for classifying fund balance in accordance with government, governmental accounting standards, Board Statement 54, fund balance reporting and government fund type definitions.
Okay, so my question is on the classifications. So could somebody, I mean, I've read this a lot, but I don't work with it day to day, so. Restricted is kinda like that Burt Lake state? Could you give me an example?
I believe this would come from the state, is that correct? This is, I mean, non-spendable restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned, this, this would be a state that.
Well, they're.
Situation.
Yeah, they're, so they're professional standards.
Right.
Yes, the state obviously adopted this standards of.
But, but we use these, cause I recall you talking about.
We absolutely.
So restricted is?
Is bolt launch.
Okay, and anything else that comes to your mind?
We've restricted the super fund.
I believe, yeah, the super fund is restricted by the.
Okay.
Um, agreement with US.
So then you have this unrestricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And if I am reading this correctly, the board by resolution could basically earmark.
I, yeah, I have no clue if it's the wrong girl, cause this is one of the things, I would like this whole section to be reviewed by the auditor, I would think, because.
That's a very good idea.
I would not disagree with having the auditor sign off on this entire chapter.
Right, yeah. Yeah, because there's some other things where I was thinking, okay, based on my interactions with the auditor is really where my experience comes from in a lot of this. And there were sentences that I went, eh, I don't know if that jives with.
This came right out of Policy Matters.
Yeah, so this one, I, I mean, the whole thing, yes, but that especially, I think, would be before we really beat it to death because I don't know the answers.
So, maybe this unrestricted committed is basically that Burt Lake State Department?
We committed it in a, in a resolution.
Yeah, exactly.
As a motion or something, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I think it is, you earmarked that back in the day.
I would assume, yes, but again.
I'll give a definition for those listing, used for specific purposes pursuant to constraints imposed by formal action of the government's highest level decision-making authority. Must be classified as committed, formal action must be taken by the township board prior to the end of that fiscal year. So a grant would be a commitment too.
Amount, and then amounts the town, uh, an example would be amounts the township board set aside by a resolution. So if you wanted to take money out of the general fund and say, we gotta spend money on new Devote Beach bathrooms, we could.
Only if we had it earmarked for that. So committed, the only one that comes to mind is the additional R and D money.
Okay.
The state park.
And would you?
But what we could do in the future is, by resolution, we're gonna give you, somebody, $125,000 to do this and this home. Just like Congress gave us the 3.5 million for the sewers.
So earmarked, so it's only you, go ahead Jan, you know.
So what I would say, for me, it's easier to think about restricted versus committed in that restricted generally means that some third party outside of the township is putting guardrails around those dollars. If internally, you're making a commitment by resolution or board action, that, that would go in the commitment. It's still unrestricted funds and you could undo that resolution, but if somebody else gives you dollars and says you can only spend it on this, you can't undo that, that restriction. So restriction, somebody else makes the rules, commitment, you guys make the rules.
I have a question. So if we do some kind of endowment fund for the parks for future maintenance or something, would that be a committed fund then because we created it?
I would say that you have exceeded my current knowledge of government. I'm gonna be super honest.
I guess that was a pretty dark question.
Yeah, endowment in government agencies is not my area of expertise. Can't say that in 30 years.
It would obviously depend on how the endowment was worded. The amount of money was being used and for what purposes.
And again, generally endowments are money that are, they come from outside an agency with some, like.
Donation, donation, yes.
U of M's endowment is not funded internally, it's funded.
So who asked the auditor to take a look at if this paragraph is.
Perhaps the, the whole chapter.
That's fine.
If that's the best person to look at it, which it probably is for all of it, like that especially.
And then on the next page where it says assigning fund balance, that's no change from your 2017. The 50% goal.
Yeah, it's, there's no.
Change there.
It's all part of 410. I'll just read it since you've, assigning fund balance, in order to assign fund balance, township board recognizes the clerk as authority to assign fund balance. Then it says two levels of fund balance, the township will establish and maintain levels of that fund balance for a purpose of the general fund as follows, then it gets into a lot of the 50%, the less than 50% of general fund expenditures. If that fund, unassigned fund balance approaches a level that greatly exceeds 50%, there's, says the township board will consider using the unassigned fund balance for the funding purposes, paying up future debt, transfer funds to capital projects, fund for future capital improvements, and other obligations of the township. So it essentially says what we've been, I believe, working to, if I understood.
So the next one, which is capital improvement plan, the real question is, this is all in the planning commission's bailiwick, it's in their bylaws.
I think the CIP, we were talking to Denise Klein about developing that within, for the IRC, so.
But it, I'm just saying, Mike gave me their new bylaws.
Yep.
And it's in there. And, and I was reading in there about it. And when I was doing research on this, it basically said that we're required to have one anyway if we have a sewer system. I didn't even know that, the law, but. It also, in that law, gives the, I might be getting too far down the weeds, but it gives the planning commission the authority to go to every department head and every board and commission and get their input. It gives them that authority, they have to, in other words, if I'm a department head and the planning commission comes to me and says, I need input for the CIP, you're required.
And that would make sense because that integrates the budget, integrates how we spend projects for the national benefit for the community, rather than have individual projects that have no alignment or integration.
Well, we have a, the ten, the plan for the DDA, we have a five-year plan for the Parks, which are already started, I mean, we have those. And we need to look at it from a township.
And what is, where's the overlap of any, where's, where are there holes of any sort?
Now, so if we continue on with the CIP, in the second paragraph under scope, it says $15,000. Okay. That's what the county uses. Doesn't mean that we have to use it.
That's a question for the auditor. The finishing statements, it's one of the first paragraphs of footnotes in it and I believe that the capital improvement now is, and I might be confusing this with someone else, but it's closer to three grand than 15 grand.
Enter.
Since we have an audience here, let's explain to them what the capital improvement fund is, if I could.
You mean a plan?
The capital improvement plan, I'm sorry. Which will have a fund at some point. The township planning commission shall, as you said, be responsible for the development and updating of the township capital improvement plan, subject to final approval of the township board. The capital improvement plan will be reviewed annually with such, with such review completed at least two months prior to initiating the development of a proposed township operating budget. It shall, the plan shall address medium to long-range needs of township regarding building, lands, major equipment and infrastructure. The plan shall prioritize the needs for the next six years beyond the current fiscal year. And then we got into capital improvement plan, of capital improvement is defined as major project or purchase that is generally not recurring, has a long life expectancy, and costs more than $15,000. Now, that, that obviously needs to be determined with proper numbers. Generally fits into one of the following. Generally fits into one of the following categories: acquisition of land or lease, construction of new buildings or facilities, which would include all related costs, construction or extension of sewer or waterway systems, construction of or extension of roads and pathways, acquisition or replacement of large vehicles, such as police car, tractor, backhoe, renovation of an asset where the renovation cost would exceed $15,000. So that ties it all together. Any questions?
I know that that has to be, it's the same thing with the IRC that has to be reviewed, and I think that's something.
Well, when I was going through this, I just kept going back and forth to that form you gave me.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's.
And this is in.
It's gonna be done one way or the other.
It's, excuse me, let me get it up, okay. Because you bring up a valid point.
One of the, I'll keep going here, but one of the things that I don't see is, once we get the plan, and then we get a budget to resource the plan, and we have a process in place online here to do that, where does that, where does that fund end up? In other words, it's gonna have to be funded at some point.
No, it's just a plan, it's not a fund.
The CIP is a plan, right? But if you're gonna actually execute the plan, you need resources. Do those become restricted resources or committed resources?
You do that in the budget, right?
I don't do it in my budget.
Do you understand the question I have? I mean, we may not have the answer.
Yes, you would have through the table that the state has, you would know where to put that.
Right, okay. Short answer.
The short answer.
Works well, thank you. All right, so the rest of the CFP goes through the budgeting process. Obviously, very similar to what would happen in the operating budget. It would be enacted as part of an annual budget adopted by the township board and will be the basis on which funds are appropriated during the budget year for identified projects. One completed project request form is submitted for each project that's attached. The forms essentially go through priority of need by the requesting department, justification for priority ranking, estimated year project commence to be completed, total estimated acquisition or construction cost, proposed method of financing or construction, I'm sorry, financing acquisition or the construction, annual debt service requirements, estimated annually operating expenses after completion, and method of financing, operating expenses.
I make a suggestion. When y'all talk to the auditor, could we ask him to inter? Or is it?
There's both, that the auditing firm depending on who you talk to.
Maybe simplify this. Make it easier for dummies like me to understand. Maybe project request form for dummies.
The form is attached somewhere here, perhaps?
Yeah, it's towards the end.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll be carrying self-explanatory, right?
But I think the purpose of the form is to create more paperwork, to try to get your thoughts down on paper.
Right.
And have it be formalized as something we can track, so that's really the.
Well, I like number eight in there, but some of this other stuff, I don't know.
Moving on, we get into the audit, 4.18.
No, 1.6.
I think you said those were self-explanatory, public hearing, and then it's adopted.
Right, okay, good, 18. Oh, there's that phrase again.
Yeah, that's right.
The note.
So.
Recognize that?
So everybody understands what you're talking about, Bob, so some people weren't here on Thursday evening. Township board shall contract with a certified public accountant annually audit the financial systems of the township. The audit contract may be for a period up to three years, but shall not exceed the current board's term of office. And then we have a statement that was brought in from MTA, I believe. And we basically struck this down in the previous three chapters, or which it was referenced.
In chapter two.
Chapter two, thank you. Although Michigan statutes specify this, this case law has established the principle that a township board cannot create an audit contract that binds a future board with respect to hiring public officers, such as assessors, attorney, township manager, billing inspectors, owner administrator, fire, and police chiefs.
Strike that again?
So we struck that again, yes. But I did not want any consumption.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Do we need to strike the second?
Part of that, the after the comma?
No, the second sentence of.
I think you're just striking but shall not exceed the current board's term of office in the note. So you're saying that audit contract.
It's only gonna be one, 418 is gonna be one line, correct?
Well, I think we can leave in the audit contract maybe for a period of up to three years.
Okay, oh, okay.
Right? That's standardly what we do, so.
And then put a period?
Put a period there.
And then scratch the rest?
Scratch the rest.
Most auditors will not take a contract for less than three years.
Right.
You don't necessarily want them to have it for more.
Makes sense, okay, good, good catch. Fiduciary bonds, township shall provide a surety bond for all township officials required by law to be bonded. Note, the township shall provide a public employee to sign this surety bond for all employees authorized to handle it. Any questions? It's current practice, right? Financial reports, periodic expenditure and revenue report, 4.20. The clerk shall prepare not less than quarterly a financial report for the board. The report will be current through the last day of the previous month and shall be presented to the board at its next regular meeting.
Do we do that already?
Did we do any, sorry?
We'll say that we do, we do not do the balance sheet at this point.
Where's that at?
4.21. So 4.20 is current practice.
So you got.
4.21 is not.
Should we?
Yes, we should.
Okay, that's, okay, so it's a goal, okay.
It's something that shows up in the audit at the end of the year, so to release it, it would be quarterly. And if things don't, and if things change too often quarterly, it ought to be halted, so thank you, play that there.
Okay. I don't understand 422.
If we invested, then I would do that, but we currently have no investments. Currently, we have no investments.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, I would, that would be counter.
Yeah, it says investment performance reports, like getting a report from your broker.
Oh, okay, all right.
So if we had extra money that we were gonna put into something.
So we could leave that in there in case that.
Absolutely, because that would be a goal to be able to do that.
Awesome.
Okay.
Hasn't happened.
I didn't understand that.
So we don't have any interest-bearing accounts, correct?
We have interest-bearing accounts, but they're general, there's no, like, I don't take any of the extra money and put it into anything like this.
Classified. So because we classify those as cash, we're not considering them as investments? I'm thinking CDs, yes?
We have no CDs.
They even get CDs, because they're highly liquid anyways.
Right, to my knowledge, I have not. I did not receive any reports or have I put anything anywhere, so, got it.
Let's move them on.
Okay. 4.23, summary of report of cash activity by fund, I currently do that one thing.
All right.
That's current practice.
And then 4.24, financial reports review. It simply says a supervisor shall review the financial report prior to the board meeting and shall recommend to the board any necessary budget amendments or adjustments.
Normally, that's the clerk. Current practice is the clerk does that. No one reviews the financial reports prior to the board meeting. Do we wanna leave that that way?
How would you like to change it?
Well, the clerk will.
The clerk will what?
Review the reports.
Yeah, and I review mine, but we don't give them to someone else to review. So I think we would strike that, the supervisor shall review prior to the board meeting.
Stay with me, where are we?
4.24.
So we take that whole four?
Strike that sentence. Yeah, I think you could take the whole 4.24 off.
Just take it right off.
Yeah. There's no need to change that.
Anything to shorten it? Okay.
Okay, internal controls. 4.25, financial employee training. Township shall provide education and training for township officials, other personnel involved in financial administration, accounting procedures, investments, budgeting, fraud prevention, as annually approved in the township budget. I think we do that today. Segregation of duties, the functions of authorizations, record-keeping, processing financial transactions shall be segregated where possible.
We do that now, as part of our internal controls, yes?
I believe so, yeah. Cross-training, bookkeeping duties shall periodically be shifted between two or more employees.
Well, that makes sense, people are stick or.
We do, yeah, we, I like cross-training, so I would support cross-training.
Cross-training, but shall periodically be shifted, I guess I don't understand that. That almost means like this week I'm gonna keep the books, and then next week you're gonna. That seems odd, I mean, you and I both have our statutory duties.
We don't have to periodically shift them, we need to make sure people have been cross-trained.
How would we report that?
I have no clue, but I would report that.
Can I ask a question about policy here? Do we require employees to take at least a week's vacation at any period during the year? So the reason that this is in here is that where people are doing the duty, where they feel like they own it, it's theirs, and no one else knows how to do it, you tend to create an atmosphere where bad things happen. And unfortunately, I've seen it. So by having people cross-trained or saying, hey, for next week, you're gonna do this, and you're gonna do that, and forcing that, that structure creates that environment mentally that you can't do funny stuff that people aren't ever gonna see. You know, I, so in a lot of organizations where it's difficult to segregate duties, and this is certainly one of them, you wanna set up other things where people know that there are no five domes, right? There are certain things that you have to own as treasurer, certain things you have to own as clerk, and certainly you as supervisor.
Right.
But where you can create oversight in the office, people booking transactions, the reviewing of transactions, and those things subject to change, you create a healthier environment where people understand that there will always be oversight.
Makes sense.
So do we need to say anything different, is the question?
I think we leave it in there, we just kinda do it as needed, you know? I mean, you can shift it.
It's during vacations, so that makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, moving right on, cash management policy. This was adopted, this is current practice, adopted June 14th, 2022. And I, since it's current practice, how much of this do you want me to cover?
We don't need to cover any of it.
We don't have to do any of that.
Let me just hit the real highlights here, though, it's about cash management. It's about bank account management, cash and check handling, cash accounting and bank reconciliation of the cash accounting, cash, bank reconciliations, online banking, which includes things like ACH, electronic fund transfers, and disbursements, account transfers, petty cash, security, use of petty cash, replenishment, loss of petty cash in plans, depositories.
Oh, hang on, I got a question.
All right.
Hang on just a second. Under bank reconciliations, it says, once approved by the clerk, such report shall be presented.
Which I have.
Under bank reconciliations. I mean, it's in our existing policy, but I just didn't understand it, so I made a note. Once approved by the clerk, such report shall be presented to the township board.
I would believe that would be in the form of my cash report that I give you each month.
That's what I thought.
I give you copies, so what happens is I reconcile, there's an approval page. Well, there's a stop before that, though, so there's an approval page that summarizes the bank transaction. I staple that to the actual bank statement. I give that to the clerk, the clerk looks at what's outstanding. If I have questions, if something the clerk has entered, that's where I'll highlight that. The two of us look at that, he double-checks my work, signs off on it. Those go into a file to go to the auditor. Then at the end of the month, I present a cash summary, which is a summarization of what we've done to give to you.
It's in that.
So I believe that matches what we do.
Okay, great.
So it's in there, right?
Yeah.
And so for everybody else, reconciliations, no different than balancing your checkbooks.
So you were on 440 authorized depositories?
Um, 440, yeah.
So it says add banks here, is that Citizens and Awaken?
Yes.
Citizens National Bank? And Awaken, is it called federal?
Right.
Yeah. And one, trying to find where it is, it might not be there yet. Somewhere in there, and I didn't have my, I couldn't print this at home to highlight. It names that the bank, this one right here, all bank accounts shall be in the name of the township and the township treasurer. Our bank accounts are just in the name of the township.
Yeah, where is that at now?
So 4.39.
Okay. All bank accounts shall be in the name of the township, period?
Period. And then where we get to the tax account, and I'm not sure where that is, the tax account says it's in my name, and it's in the township.
This right there just says the use of the township's tax ID number shall be strictly.
Oh, right here, right in the second sentence, tax collections shall be deposited in a separate bank account in the name of the treasurer.
Should say the township.
In the name of the township, I'm the signer, but it's in the name of the township.
Why does the MTA got all this stuff in there?
Well, not, we don't all live in a little community.
Right.
If you walked into Comerica Bank as a board member, and you could be recognized and change something about that account, that would not be ideal. So they wanna make sure that the treasurer is involved in any of those changes, even if you had the other boardboard members sign.
And our banks, yeah, yeah, you don't have to do that.
No, say, say.
Our banks make sure that happens.
Yeah, nothing can be changed at the bank without bothering.
Yeah.
Well, I can attest that, they're overly cautious.
Yes. Okay, so those were the two.
All right, 4.1.
4.41.
Yeah, 4.41. Authority to make bank deposits.
Now, is that correct, the township treasurer is responsible?
Yes, I mean, both of us.
You did, not the clerk?
Not the clerk, no, and right now.
What about the deputy treasurer?
Deputy treasurer may as well.
So should we change it?
It says it.
Yeah, the deputy treasurer has statutory rules that contain that, but, and I don't know, I read through this, and I was kinda like, it reads okay. Filing positions are authorized by the treasurer to make bank deposits. So right now, how we've created the checks and balance is, I do all with journalization. No one else does any journalization in the S and A to create that deposit.
For all revenues.
Then I hand the actual bank bag off to the office assistant who delivers it to the bank so that I'm not the only one touching the money. So that's segregation of duties in that respect, when we have that extra person, we never had that.
Does anybody sign up on the actual bank deposit?
No.
Okay.
So does any of this have to be changed?
The only thing, I mean, all the deposit withdrawal or account transfer receipts should be returned to the treasurer or clerk, those stay in my office, so to.
How about the second paragraph?
To avoid, no, we're right there.
Oh, okay.
We could take away or clerk.
You can take clerk out of that, yeah.
Because I don't think you wanna be responsible for them.
Where's this now?
Or any future.
I don't wanna have two people responsible for the same thing.
Right here, third paragraph.
Yes.
Return to the treasurer to be used, got it?
4.42, notice of investment policy, depositories.
I believe there is a policy, an investment policy in place, we don't reference it there, but this looked, I mean, this comes right from law, how we do it, so I would say.
Well, since we do get, we have.
Are the approved financial institutions the same as before?
Yes.
Okay, citizens.
Yeah, so I can find a copy of that policy, we can, and that's what I wanted to do, find that.
Citizens.
And I would like to look at this against the current investment policy.
So, yeah, make enough to include current investment policy.
She's gonna, she's gonna compare it, though. See if it needs updating, is what you're saying?
Right, yes.
This is really close.
Actually, this is very helpful.
Accounts receivable.
I don't understand that one, 4.3.
Well, if you don't, I certainly don't.
Because accounts receivable are, I process all the money coming in. So that's what that is, that's all.
That's true.
Okay.
I did see in the audit one time, there were, there was the word accounts receivable.
Right.
Would that be like sewer money coming in?
All money comes in through, through my office, but I just thought that was just kind of odd and random right there.
So, so if, let's say, for example, like the township decided to take on the responsibility for trash pickup, and now you're billed for something, same way that you would bill for an SAD or for taxes or the sewer district. It's ma, it's not just receiving the money, but you have to clear those, those balances that are due from people.
Okay.
So it's a little bit more complicated than running a cash register.
Right, it's current practice, but it was just this one sentence in the middle that I got. Okay, why is that there? Makes sense?
Uh, moving ahead to four point four four, invoice preparation.
I had a highlight there. I wanna run this by her. Her, her sentence.
The following positions shall be responsible for preparing invoices. The revenues due to the township, so that's obviously things like property taxes, incorrect.
No, that's all new. It's sewer billing, um, import expenses.
Should this be changed?
The term invoice, so those people off.
So this is good?
This is good.
Okay. And then I, the next paragraph, I have to jump in, but it's all related. That first ques, the first sentence in four, four, five.
Yeah, that, I would say, would just be the clerk, not the treasurer and the clerk.
Shall be given daily to the...
Clerk.
Well, I actually caught that one, yay!
Yes. I was like, no, I don't want those.
And what about the second sentence then?
Well, it should stay here.
Well, I do use...
On that first sentence, it should be owed by the township, right?
Ode to, ode to the township.
One or the other, right?
Ode to the township, yes.
The treasurer will use the invoice copy?
I do use the invoice copies and...
So it's good?
It's good. I, I mean, if we wanna clarify, when I get those, when I get the check to sign, I also get a copy of the invoice to verify, so I think it's...
I guess you'd have to, right?
Yeah, so.
And then how about the next sentence? The clerk will use?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have any more questions until four, four, eight.
Okay, book four six is accounting for accounts receivable. For all payments received, the clerk shall credit the receivable. After listing all amounts invoiced but not yet received, shall be prepared or reconciled to the general budget. So essentially, I believe that's a check register, is it? Or are we gonna king against those?
No, it's your GL numbers. So you're gonna assign a GL number when you get an invoice, you're gonna, where it's...
Where it has to go, it has to be debit, yeah.
Yep.
Or a creditor, depending on what the account invoice is. Accounts payable, township clerk, deputy clerk shall be responsible for processing all accounts payable.
And this, I'm not sure it's our current job descriptions, but at this point, the office is...
Well, it says with the township personnel.
Yeah, no, that works.
Uh, four point four eight.
If I may, Bobby, I want you to please look back at that accounting for accounts receivable.
Okay.
Because you receive the money and you journalize it when you do your cash receipting.
Right.
He's responsible for the payables, correct? But just take another look. I apologize for interrupting, but...
That's okay, that's okay, but let's, let's get it cleared up here, so, good point.
So, so my understanding of that...
What paragraph?
Four, four, six.
Four, four, six is, she's actually doing the transaction, but it's the clerk's responsibility to make sure that the subsidiary ledger, the detail of the AR totals the same as the balance.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's fine, I just was like, just take another look at it.
No, it's a great point that it's not clear. As, sitting where I sit and doing what I do, you know, it tends to make more sense to me than other people, and I'm very sensitive, but I want everybody to understand.
Well, it's not very clear.
So we wanna re, talk to the... Thank you.
To the auditor, I wonder.
Aud, that person. I got my A word.
Four, four, six.
Yeah.
The treasurer credits.
Is a question mark?
Yeah.
Refer to auditor?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, I think it just needs to be more like street language that can help you.
Right, and that's what a lot of this was.
Accounts were good with street language.
I know, I know. We can have both of them.
All right, so let's do all that.
Claims.
Processing of claims, four, four, eight.
We're doing that now. Correct?
That's our, that's the bills. Claims are bills.
Okay. Same with, uh, the claims report, four, four, nine is bills, correct?
Yeah, it's the, I believe it's the check register. Am I right this time?
Claims is a new and interesting word.
Would, the different words make it more clear?
Bills. I mean...
You wanna call it bills report?
It could, I, it makes more sense, right?
Okay, four, four, nine.
Or put examples in there. Take claims report, but I think if we had examples of what we do in this township, it would be...
I mean, bills is a very simple word, but I can't think that it doesn't cover everything that this means. So everywhere it says claims, it's bills?
In four, four, nine?
Four, four, eight, four, four, nine, and five, oh.
Processing of bills. Bills reports, board approval required for all bills. Got it?
Check controls, that's what we do.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, okay, that's four, five, one. Yes, we do the authorized check signers. We just went through that, correct? At least with citizens, we'll kinda, we can... Check processing.
We're doing that now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Electronic payments, we're doing that now. We have an ACH resolution. Don't know if this preferences that or not.
I got a question.
We've got that, though.
There is an ACH policy?
Yes.
We have already?
Yes.
Would you wanna compare that to this?
And then reference it.
And see if it just needs to be updated? Because this would supersede.
Right, we wanna insert a policy here, which is, the policy is set from...
What's that?
Like, I think it's twenty thirteen.
Uh, let's see.
And you do the ACH agreements?
Honestly, the ones we have have been in place so long, I'm not sure. The clerk gets all of the notifications, so I would almost say that the clerk would be... We do, we will have to look at that, Jay.
Which one you, which one you have on?
Those will be in your office, the ACH arrangements, because they're with the state.
Four, five, six.
Mostly with the state USDA, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
And generally, the clerk is assigned.
So, the township clerk may enter into...
Do they ever have to be renewed?
No.
Does it if you change the bank?
Correct, and then that requires multiple signatures, there's a state form, which we've done that, so.
So four, five, six should say...
Supervisor that signs that.
Clerk, not treasurer?
But I would like for us to, to double-check what, what's currently in place.
I wouldn't have any problem.
But I do believe it is.
Having dual sign-on, like we would know with any...
Well, it's whatever they require.
Yeah.
I mean, the state's gonna say this is who signs it, so we just have to look at what we've got in place.
So we need the auditor.
Question, yeah.
And state.
Again, those have been in place for so long that...
So we have similar questions with four, five, seven, and eight, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Check.
So it's all about, the questions are, what role?
Right, and it's all, and a lot of that may be part of the...
Can the auditor tell us this?
We can tell ourselves. We just need to find proper officials. We'll be good.
This is friggin' nasty.
We also have a credit, do we have a credit card use policy?
Yes.
We enacted one a few months back.
Yes, okay, I was gonna say, I thought we did.
Where, where are you?
And it's in here later.
Okay, we're quick. Oh, it's a standardized form to be developed.
But that's just a form.
Okay. So this goes along with what we've already...
Right. Four, six.
Four, six, yes. Tax account dispersments.
Um, this is not how this happens.
Okay.
Um, we have a separate bank account, again, in the name of the township.
Okay. The township treasurer shall create a separate bank account in the name of the township.
Township.
Yeah. And BS and A, I don't have to have the, I control that account, so I do not give them to the clerk to, to print the checks. I print the checks.
Okay, so how do you want this to read?
You just strike that whole...
Strike that whole S sentence, yeah.
Oh, just keep the first sentence?
Yes, because I, that's law.
And then the first sentence changed treasurer to township?
To township, yeah.
The township treasurer shall create a separate bank account in the name of the township and shall account for the tax funds separately from other township funds?
Correct.
Four, six, one.
The, we're getting to expense reimbursements.
That's easy.
Versus dispersments. Expense reimbursements, the township shall reimburse all officials and employees or necessary expenses incurred in fulfillment of duties. Authorization for any travel, business expense shall be obtained prior to incurring the cost. I think we do that today. Is it true or false?
Well, here's a question. So if I am going to attend the Robert's Rules of Order and I have money in my budget to do so, but I register at the door, then I would generally turn that receipt in, but I didn't ask for permission to go because it's in my budget already? Is that okay with the way that's written?
That's what we're asking. That's what we're asking.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I mean...
That's your chance to change it.
I think, I think we need to strike that whole S.
And I wouldn't strike the last S because it doesn't just pertain to you guys, it pertains, also pertains to an employee.
Right, plus...
Who then comes in and says, you owe me.
Yeah, and there are some things I would need authorization for. If I, you know, wanted to take a trip that was, you know, within dollar amounts. If it's in my budget right now, I believe that the probation act gives me authority.
And I would say in that situation, because the budget is already authorized, that for you, it is authorized.
Right.
And it was prior to the actual trip.
So that's appropriate.
If we're spending in excess of your budget...
Then I would have to ask, there.
Yeah.
That's right, I think it could be for any travel or business.
Yeah.
I think it's... Expenses outside of your budget shall be...
Yeah, outside of your, how about that?
Well, I think it needs to be obtained by your department head.
I'm my department.
Well, then you're...
So, authorization.
But it's like...
But that's the only thing, just to clarify, if you're gonna, what authorization you're gonna take.
But you don't want, like, likes that, or if it goes outside of your budget, you don't want a department head saying that, because the board has to approve, we'd have to approve your money.
We already had, put that criteria in there near the department.
Right.
Recommendations.
So I don't know how you clarify that properly.
How do we train people now to know whether something is authorized or not?
Basically, if it's, if this is my budget and it's within my budget...
And you understand it because you sit here, but I'm talking about other people.
Right.
Other users of township resources. How do they know?
I mean, there's the library, there's police officers.
Oh, they have their own.
No.
I, I know, they have their own board.
They have their own budget.
And their own budget.
So it's department heads?
Yeah.
Which generally are the three of us. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's a...
Well, Doug's a department head. Yeah, he's considered, cause he's, yeah, just a whole...
Yeah, I don't know how you train, I mean, that's, I think, probably a different, but a different...
Well, and, and it's different everywhere and, and everyone wants to change the rules as, as they go along. This is human nature. That, the, one of the points of reducing all of this to writing is to help us identify these issues and train people to something that's in writing.
Be consistent.
So that they, so that they have clarity, whether they're the office assistant or, or whomever.
Right.
So that there isn't that gray area.
Right.
And I, and I'm dealing with gray area right now, right?
Right, so it needs to be...
Authorization for any travel or business expense.
I'm sorry, can I say something? We already, we already have that policy in place. The department heads, so for example, when Terry wants to go through training, she needs to go through some training, she was asking John, John would approve it. So we already have that in place for the people in the office, each individual board.
And I'm not inferring that we don't. I'm asking, how, how do we train that?
How do we communicate?
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that policy is.
It's in our, it's, it's in our policies that we just adopted.
So we just need to look at, question mark, find the policy? And...
Are we on four, six, one still?
Color, all of that stuff is...
And the notice what?
To find the policy, to see what, what the wording is there.
So...
So there's a policy in place in something we recently passed that would refer to that, don't believe. So we need to look that up. Compare language, make sure we're not, which makes sense.
Okay, so, four, six, two, I think the last two sentences could be struck. Or, you could say, you may use that form, because it's reasonable.
Right now, we use a memo.
Okay, okay. We can just scratch the last two sentences?
Or you, I mean, you can say may, because I didn't believe that that, I didn't know that form existed, so if it's a good form, I don't mind using it, but...
Shall we, well, let's scratch two then, because you're using a memo. All requests for expense reimbursement shall be made by memo or...
Not that form.
May be made by memo or GSA blah, 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 blah. Okay.
Okay.
A lot of expenses, any kind of discussion there?
Pretty easy.
Travel reimbursed.
It's pretty easy.
That's pretty easy.
Everybody uses the GSA for DM rates.
Uh, identity theft protection, social security number, privacy policy, it's in the handbook.
And then by handbook?
I believe so. Uh, social security number, privacy policy.
I'm assuming this is a law.
It's worth a word.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, I didn't know anything. And that, familiar.
I mean, essentially, it says, social security numbers shall be collected only where required by federal state law or as otherwise permitted by federal state law for legitimate reasons. Consistent with this privacy policy that goes into...
Everybody's followed suit ever since the federal government left their four digits.
Yeah, I didn't see any problems with it, I just don't know that it...
If we find one, we'll come back to it. Um, public display, fourth point six, six, township shall not place more than four sequential, there it is again, four sequential digits of the social security number and identification cards badges.
It's the big policy, it's the privacy question.
That's four, six.
So four, four, six, seven is account number, same thing, four sequential digits of social security numbers, which is, are you a number of individual, I guess, or you have auto computer transmission?
Now, hang on a minute. I don't know if you noticed or not, but with Medicare now, they won't even use the last four digits anymore because they're so concerned about privacy and they changed everybody's number. And the fewer social security digits you have out there, the better. I don't know that a township should use any part of someone's social security number as a primary account for an individual.
I don't believe that we do.
No. Yeah.
So can we just scratch that? Oh, it says.
We, do we?
I think.
The clerk's office can answer this.
I'm gonna save your tax reports, you'll need them, but otherwise, it's, it's, it doesn't show up.
This is just, this is just accounts.
It doesn't show up on anything.
I don't think it shows up, but the, but the, the message here is, we don't wanna use.
Exactly.
Personal identification information to identify an employee.
Exactly.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
And it says, shall not.
Shall not use.
So that's good.
It ought to say, shall not use any part of a social security number, is what it ought to say.
But like Sue said, there are some reports that Jay will need to file that will require social security.
Reports are fine. This says accounts.
Yeah, you're taking a, something that's personal identification and putting it into a township report or account or badge or whatever, we don't wanna do that. These are designed to.
Well, no, you have to when you're doing the report.
No, but that's, that's, so, think of it as an employee identification number, I just use sequential, right? If I hire you and you're employee number three and he's next, he's employee number four, and, and any report that I can use or I have to cross-reference, I use employee numbers, not social security numbers.
And that's what, that's in effect right now.
Yeah. And, so the argument here is, there's no argument really, but, but clarification here is.
So are you saying this?
We used to identify employees by their social security number.
We never.
No, no, I'm saying.
I would see that.
We never did. Other organizations in the past used to do that, it's forbidden.
And I would leave it in so that sometime, long after you're gone, somebody doesn't think it's a good idea, doesn't change that, or get back.
So leave it alone?
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt anything. We, we do a better version.
So it shall not.
Four, six, nine?
All right. Or four, seven, oh?
Yeah, mail documents, social security. Again, it's still more about social.
Those are all, that's all about.
It's all about social security. Storage, access to social security numbers, disposal. And all of our issues, social security numbers.
For the red flag.
So we're going to red flags rule policy, four, point seven, five. To establish an identity theft prevention program designed to detect, prevent, mitigate identity theft in connection with the opening of a covered account or existing covered account. To provide for continued administration of the program components of the federal paid commissions red flags rule, uh, I won't read that, implementing sections of that rule, transactions. So identifying, definitions of red flags would be identifying information means any name or number that may be used alone or in conjunction with any other information to identify a specific person, including name, address, telephone number, social security number, date of birth, government issued driver's license or identification as an alien registration number, government passport number, employer or taxpayer identification number, electronic identification number, computers, internet protocol, address or routing code. Identity theft means fraud committed or attempted using the, the identifying information of another person without authority. So.
So this is basically all this whole section means, that we're gonna keep our eyes open to.
Exactly.
All of our information.
And to train other people on the team to do the same stuff.
Okay, so, uh, move on to identification of red flags, seven, seven, four, seven, seven. Suspicious documents.
I think we just skip that one.
Okay, I'm, I'm just looking for.
I, I think.
The hindsight.
What, there's another note here, what Jan just said is how we train others, so the clerk and treasurer historically have been the two people doing everything.
Right.
If we're adding other people, we need to implement a plan or put these things somewhere where they have to read them so they understand them as well.
Which would be right here.
Right, but I think in a, I mean, is it in employee handbook, does this part go in there? Can we talk about that? That's a good point to bring.
I would be hard for us to believe that if you sat down, the average person, and asked them to read this and say, do you understand what you have to do now, they would, that would not be fair.
Right, so we have to figure out, and again, that's another, that's another task, to figure out how to put that into.
So I'm a new employee.
Right.
You're going through, and I'm gonna be involved in finding, you or you are going through this with me.
To make sure.
And you're gonna say, all right, I, I want you to read this, let's go through it.
Right, and we're gonna come up with some common folk language to explain it better. But this is the legalese of it that we have to have, but we need to come up with some.
This is one of the few.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is good here because it, it is what it's supposed to be, but again.
It's an easy read.
Right.
At least for me.
So we do a little program where we give some examples and we have to talk them through it, and then they sign off if they have that, that program.
What we should do is a YouTube video. And, uh, if they could, they could read it and hear it at their leisure and.
Well, if you decide to implement this, that punches another one of your blocks. And.
So we're okay with that?
Number four.
Four.
Four, four, training plans and programs.
This actually came up where I worked yesterday, I was helping someone at their desk and noticed that the post-it note where I gave them their initial temporary password had been included in their current passwords and was sitting on their desk. That looks like my handwriting, isn't that the password I gave you? Did you change it?
No.
So, yeah, so that's.
Yeah, it's important. All right, um, alerts from others, notice to the township from a customer, identity theft victim, law enforcement, or other person that's, that's opened or maintaining a fraudulent or has, or is maintaining a fraudulent account for a person engaged in identity theft. So it goes into detecting red flags.
I think we can go with that.
Think you're done?
I think we don't have to. We know, we need to work that.
So the, the highlights are detecting red flags, preventing and mitigating identity theft, protecting customer identifying information. Brings us to, and then it talks pretty much about the same stuff going forward, four point eight one gets into program updates and theoretically reviewing and updating these documents to reflect changes in risk to customers and soundness of the township from identity theft.
Got it.
So program administration, uh, program administration lies with an identity theft committee for the township, which is headed by the supervisor, superintendent, clerk, manager, other, with the identified positions.
So this is where we have to establish the policy, so that's.
Who's responsible for it? Who's going to develop the training, who's going to track training?
So four point eight three, that's exactly about what you were talking about, staff training and stuff.
Four point eight two.
It applies to this, that's great.
So what note do we have to put there?
I just put task, that's a task we have to.
Forty, three.
Forty, two and three.
Task to who?
That's great.
We can.
Can't determine that other later.
I think if you end the first meeting, you can then, you know, clarify all of those questions.
Right.
So this is something we would do after we, after the auditor gets back.
Once this is established.
This is a policy. Okay.
So it takes us to four point eight five.
You're good with eight four?
Yeah, it's, it's part of that as well.
Okay. Is that a task that?
Yeah.
No?
That's our post audit policy, that's the same as what we're doing now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, post audit, there's no change.
So that's just brought in.
Right. Bids and quotes.
That's from the purchasing policy?
Right, but I did. I wanted to ask under four point nine one. And then the next page over, it says. This is where we, down there, it says, for purchases of goods, of goods and services under five thousand. Remember, we raised it from twenty-five to five?
Yeah.
But then I said, I, I wanted to add this sentence that says, if it's under five thousand, uh, officials, et cetera, et cetera, will see if the goods or services required are available from a source in the township. If so, the purchase shall be made with the township vendor. I'm asking to add that.
So it's not in the order thing?
No, it's there, but it's not in the original policy.
Gotcha.
So for purchases of goods and services under five thousand, township officials, department heads and employees will first check to see if goods or services required are available from any other source located in Tuspor Township. If so, the purchase will be made with the township then, Tuspor Township vendor.
So even if I'm gonna spend a thousand dollars more to buy it locally, I would have to buy it locally?
No. No, we don't wanna do that to me.
We could say we would make every effort for if it's.
And that'll, we call it a preference, but it does mean you have to do it.
Right.
So how?
Yeah, we could, we would give preference to local lenders.
Okay, so how could we reword that?
If it's competitive price.
How could we reword that?
Yes, you say we will use a local vendor. You could say we will give preference to local vendors.
Okay, so the, the second, scratch the second sentence. And say.
We will give preference to local vendors.
Right.
Or preference will be given to local vendors.
Preference. Will.
Michael, if you wanna add anything to that, uh, revision, but I don't.
If. Possible, if possible.
It's possible.
Possible. So in other words, we wanna help you, but you're not gonna rip us off.
Right.
All right, and the other one is, um.
Uh, and then the second, the second one.
Yeah.
Right below that, I'm asking.
I don't know where you're at.
Let's read it later.
We lost plus five.
It's right above four point, it's right above four point nine two.
Okay, so you're ahead of where I'm at, I'm looking, I'm trying to figure where you are on the page, but I'm not finding it.
I apologize, the rest of the policy.
I thought you were asking to add it, that you had it, we didn't.
No.
Okay.
So, so if a grant application to enter study services under twenty-five thousand, which does not include goods or construction, Tuspor Township may use the NNCOG, is what it is.
As a sole source.
As a sole source.
So in other words, I. Well, I know that we had a problem when we were wanting to outsource, what was it?
Was it the planning commissions?
Yes.
Tenure plan.
And, and NNCOG said, we won't compete. And that caused a problem and they weren't gonna take it.
No, it was, they, we have to go back and ask, we have to get their bid, it was obviously, you know, so far above what we were.
When I was doing the EPA stuff, Mr. Tucker said, if you put out an RFP for someone to prepare the application to the EPA, we will not bid on it because NNCOG will not compete with commercial entities.
So you, this sentence is saying that we can supersede.
Yes.
The bid requirement and just go with them, huh, because we know that they will do it.
Yes.
At a fair price for us.
Oh, more than a fair price.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Because it says may, it doesn't say you have to, if there's a reason that you wouldn't want to use them, I mean, people are gonna use their expertise in, as they're.
I mean, that cost me like three days.
Right.
Of work to pull the RFP. Okay. And then, uh, four, nine, four is no change. That's existing.
So that is.
Four, nine, four is the federal awards policy, Tuspor Township federal awards policy, definition of.
Sections one, two, three, four, five, but I did have a question on, even though it's existing, I had a question on page fifty-one, right of the, the last paragraph, which is right above section five, the last paragraph of section four, says, if a grant application is denied by the grantor, a copy of the denial letter must be sent to the clerk for retention of records. Grant requiring, that, that whole paragraph would just confuse me. It's okay to leave it in there, I just wanted somebody to explain it. It's already in there, it's existing.
So it's the grant we just did for the seawall, it required a local match, so the township board approved it.
Okay.
Now, what we didn't do, what we should have done at that time of approval, is to then recognize that in the budget, but now, Don learned how to do that, so now that's being done, but it wasn't done at the time Dolly was here.
Okay, so what does?
But I do believe now that is standard practice that you've set up.
But why do you have to do it?
That in the.
Do you have to do a budget amendment?
Yes, because you want to, we don't wanna just go out and get grants and not know how we're gonna pay for them or whatever.
I understand, thank you.
So it, it puts it into the budget right away, which previously, Dolly didn't do that with that one in his class.
Can I answer your question on that? So let's say that the grant requires certain expenditures for administering the grant, would you also then change the budget to recognize those additional expenditures?
I would say yes, but we, I think if you refer to the policy, see if we have that in there, but my, my off the cuff answer would be yes.
It makes sense to me.
Yeah, I would think you would include everything because that's, again, part of the problem is, if it doesn't, then we're spending taxpayer dollars that we didn't account for, we're ending up over budget.
So we're having to do that right now with the sewer, so we're pretty hands-on through the, the January third, uh, meeting, hearing, whatever, there's a cost involved there, township's paying the cost, but we're gonna have to set that aside, make sure that the, if, uh, once the grant's approved or the project's approved, then we can pull that money back.
And basically, yeah, and as that all set up for sewer.
I have a question on that, um, if we do that, would it be at like its own cost center because of the money going in, in allocate?
It's, it's, yeah, there's.
More or less, more or less, yes.
It's a virtue dupe.
Right, yeah, so it's, I, we refer to them as buckets, and so yes, it's its own bucket that it goes, and, and then it's gonna, gonna get paid back to the, to the other bucket once we get the money.
Okay, we're at four point nine two, invoices, we're gonna change the bills, be consistent with previous.
Oh.
Or, or at least reference it as if, if we can't change it because it's a government.
Where you at?
I think invoices, okay, claims is the word we were.
Yeah, okay.
So I think invoices.
So if you're changing into bills there, do you wanna change it, bills here?
We can.
And then everybody knows what bills.
Where, where's that?
Right here, four point nine two.
Those bills, we're changing that to.
I don't see four, oh, all invoice.
We backed up.
We backed up.
So change four point nine two to bills?
Bills and bills.
Because in other places where we're talking about the place where we pay them to.
Bills and bills.
And may I ask that we add, and I think we've kinda done it as we go throughout, but can, so the federal awards policy we already have.
Yes.
Can we add that policy adopted language next to it in parentheses?
I was going to, but I don't remember when we adopted it.
Okay, so if we just add that, so that it's consistent as well?
Wasn't it June fourteen? Yeah. Dawn. Wasn't it at the same time as the cash management policy?
It might not have been, if the policies are all online, they're all posted online.
So we can look at it.
And signature.
And reference it.
It has, yeah, I know they're online, it has the dates. Okay, so enacted.
So that goes all the way through?
All the way to the end? That's it? So the only, the only question I have is if we're gonna send this to the auditor, who's gonna send it to the auditor and what deadline are we gonna give the auditor? Cause I don't want this to go on, I don't know. I mean, we give a reasonable.
I think we'll have.
February.
I was gonna say, because they're in the type of audit season, I doubt this.
January thirty-one.
They may have someone in the office, could we ask out of respect to them?
Sure.
What is a reasonable deadline?
Could we suggest?
You know, because they could have someone in their office that isn't part of the.
Do we wanna get a cost?
We should, yeah, because it won't.
Give us the cost and tell us when you can have it finished.
And who's gonna be responsible for that?
Who will do that? So the question is, we want you to review this after I try and make all these changes, by the way, and send it to them, and then we ask them.
Cost.
How much would this cost for you to review this? Here are some of.
The change will be highlighted.
Do you want me to put the questions for the auditor in? And when can we have it?
The areas will be highlighted.
Okay, got it.
So that, review the document, review any areas that are contentious. Who is our auditor that we're gonna send this to?
To, well, Joe, I don't, I would talk to Joe, Berlin. And that'll.
What about the other guy?
Neil?
He's not an auditor.
Who?
Yeah, he's not an auditor, he's a consultant.
He's a CPA.
Yeah, so I would say, I would say.
Which would be better, the CPA or the auditor?
The auditor.
The, yeah, the auditor.
I was gonna prove it in here.
Yeah.
Okay.
What is Neil's area of expertise?
He, he did work for Gaybridge, so he has a C, he's a CPA, he has auditing experience, he also has CAF experience, so.
So it would depend on what, where he wants to practice versus Berlin, who's practicing in Missouri.
Right.
You wouldn't save us any money, you just forgot.
It would probably save us money, but I don't know that it would be, I think the auditors are, we want it.
If they, if you don't wanna do it, don't.
Twice.
Yeah, and then we can talk to him.
Okay, got it.
Did it with Neil, he might still have to, have the auditor look at it still.
Yeah.
I got it.
Because he's not an auditor, he is a CPA.
Just to summarize, I will send it to auditor Joe Berlin, it'll be written up to show either questions or changes, you know, before and after that we wanna make. And then have him review that and do a general review of the rest of the document and make sure everything's in order.
But we're gonna get a cost and timing.
We're gonna get a cost and timing first.
For the board to approve.
Janet, you wanna take five, it's yours.
Well, basically, this is just the personnel.
Do you have a five?
We don't have one.
All right, well, it's been working, yeah.
It's just pretty much the general employee hiring policy that we already approved, but I don't know if it went to the attorney or not for approval.
Well, no, our hiring policy went for approval.
Okay, well, the hiring policy and then, and then the employee handbook is pretty much what this is.
Employee handbook, I don't believe they did.
Okay, so.
No, he has it, he has it, but it's not, you never.
Okay, so hiring policy, yes, employee handbook, no.
But there's some changes that I made, we made, Janet and I made, be added. Otherwise, it's the same. And that is five-nineteen and five-twenty, five-nineteen going from the MTA. And five-twenty, Mike, I cut and pasted from the document you sent out from Parplan. That they recommended to.
Social media?
Yeah. That's word for word from your document that you sent out from the insurance company. And then five-two-one is also word for word from your insurance company, or the insurance company. Other than that, everything else is the same. Oh, except for five-three-three. There was no grievance procedure for employees, I think it's absolutely paramount that we have a grievance procedure for any employee, and that came from the MTA and Spring Lakes.
Want me to go over the grievance policy?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, that'd be in five-three-three.
Well, wait a minute, before we do that, are you okay with the Parplan additions?
I think so, we did discuss that.
It's word for word. I mean, that was their recommendation.
Yeah, I haven't read any of this, so, just getting it just now.
It's, uh.
It's gotta go to the lawyer anyway.
Yeah, um, the, just non.
Remember when Mike says, you, you sent it out for a meeting.
After he has a meeting with the insurance adjuster, he's kinda fainting at every turn, so.
So that's what's on the fact.
So wherever it says Parplan, that's word for word what they recommended we add. Which was social media policy and weapons policy. I mean, why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah.
In fact, we oughta tell the lawyer, look.
This is big.
Don't bother, don't, don't, don't spend money on those two issues.
Okay, so five-three-three, employee grievance procedure, and pretty much it's gonna tell the employee how to, if they have a grievance, they have to discuss it with the department head or their township manager within five working days. Step two, if the problem is not resolved to this oral procedure, the employee may reduce the problem to writing. And then the department head or township supervisor or manager will have five days in which to give the employee a written response. Step three, if it's still not resolved to the employee's satisfaction, he may ask for a hearing with Personnel Committee. In the event there is no current Personnel Committee, the township supervisor, clerk, and treasurer will serve as the committee. And the Personnel Committee will review the employee's grievance and the written response from the department head or township manager. Pretty much, it, it, it goes through this, and then the township, if it's elected officials, its employees, and its township board shall not take punitive action against the employee for utilizing grievance procedure, which is condescending. Then it has a limitations period, which is normal, and that's pretty much it, reserves, the township reserves the right and discretion to amend, delete, or change benefits, compensation, and policies. So, in terms of employment, so pretty much that's what that is.
So you have any change you might wanna make, is this word township manager in step one and two?
Yeah, everywhere it says township manager, I would assume it should say township supervisor.
Okay.
Yes.
There's lots of places, yeah.
Personnel Committee, the, the three of us would get together, now would that, is that like the election committee, would that have to be posted, and then we have to go into closed session?
Oh, that's a good question.
Would have to post that and go into closed session?
I would think so, it would have to go into closed session.
No, you're limited on closed sessions.
That we would have to, if it was a personnel.
Issue.
Issue.
The employee has to request.
Oh, okay, that's right, the employee has to request a closed session.
Does that need to be in here, I think?
I think.
It's general township law.
I was gonna say it's state law.
It's general township law.
Where at?
Right below step three, just like employee. I mean, must or has the right to request closed session?
Must.
Must, request.
If, if, if that's what they want.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Has the, that's what I'm saying, if it has the right.
We don't have that, so we don't know. I mean, you just have, I would reference, just reference state law.
Employee shall have all, shall have all rights available to them under state law.
We shall what?
Under Open Meetings Act.
Open Meetings Act.
Have what?
All rights.
Afforded them under the, afforded them under the ONA.
Shall have all rights.
That means that they can, they can request a close.
Okay, got it.
That's right.
All right, so where's this going?
This is, you said this, we only added this.
So we send this to the attorney?
Yeah, they have it, but they don't have the update.
They don't have any of it. I mean, they have it from a year ago.
Yeah.
All right, I'll update this, do you want me to send it to you then?
Please, and I'll send it to you.
When do you think we can have it back?
Well, press it is.
End of the year?
Yeah, press it effective Monday, I mean, I'll, yeah, we'll get it Monday.
Okay. Well done.
Or no, we need to do the signature card.
Yes, okay, we need a motion.
I would like to make a motion, so I spoke with Awaken after Jane had gone down there and.
I'll, I'll second you, well, you guys don't make any motion.
Yep, so what she needs is to remove, the wording needs to be to remove, and I have no clue where these names came from, and Sue's gonna laugh when she hears who they have. She could not find any change of signature cards, so these go back at least fifteen years. So the names that need to be removed are Susan Fisher, Karen Pung, and Michael Melazovic, which I don't, I said it's Lynn Melazovic was my.
Yeah.
But she said she wants Michael on there, so we're gonna give her what she wants, so remove those three names.
So how do you spell Karen, Karen's a mistake?
P-U-N-G. And add. Jay Reedson. Yeah, the legal way the names are, and Terry McTulson. Jay, Jane, and Terry.
This is for.
What about you?
I'm already on there. So she wants to remove those three, add those three, and then she will.
This is for Awaken.
With those minutes, for Awaken, two accounts at Awaken. So, that's my motion.
And there's supporters.
I'll second.
Jay seconds, all in favor?
Hi.
Local.
Just to show some of the minutes.
Yeah, she's got, she just wants.
Send the minutes of majority. All in favor.
There was nothing else, so citizen comments? Yes, ma'am?
So this was, at some point, we changed this to be a workshop. I would ask if the future meetings are gonna be workshops, can we please include the appropriate people in the workshops, like if you're gonna be talking about, in this case, CIP for planning commission? We weren't advised, nobody knew about this, can we have those people involved, ARCs or whoever, if you're gonna be talking about, because they should participate in the workshop. Those groups should participate in the workshop.
I hope during this, I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's it, that's all I had.
Can I respond to this?
Yes.
I think that's gonna be absolutely necessary when we get into strategic, it's all about a beach week.
Agreed.
And there's gonna have to be training, just like, same thing the county did, y'all had one session here in June, correct? Last year?
They helped, yeah, they helped.
Something like that, good point.
Uh, citizen comments, I'm sorry. Okay. Citizen comments? Board comments?
I just wanna thank you for doing this, I learned more today than at any other meeting I've ever been.
This is very helpful.
And you really helped me. I'm very comfortable now with my statutory duties, because you helped me. And the next guy that sits in this chair, I hope you roar for four with him in public court, it's very helpful, appreciate it.
Well, comments? All right, well, comments?
Motion to adjourn, thank you, folks.
Hi.